I'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for... Today is July like the 6th or something, isn't it?
Uh, yes.
Today's the 6th, yes, thank you. It's a lot like the 6th. Uh, the first item... Oh, first we'd like to excuse Councilmember Winkle, and I believe we have Councilmember Glover on the phone. Chris, are you there? Well, we will... We are right exactly on time, so we might... We'll hope that he joins us here in the next few minutes. If we get Mr. Glover on the line, please let us know. The first item on our agenda is to review the July 10th council meeting agenda, so please refer to that document if you would. I heard a beep. Chris, is that you?
Yes, I am here.
Hi, Chris. We just barely opened things up, and we're now just started to look at the agenda for the Monday council meeting. First few items are getting the meeting started and liquor license applications. Item four, various purchase contracts. I do note that we are going to have a presentation on item 5Q when we get to that, but we'll do that at the end of the agenda review. Agenda item five are various resolutions.
Mayor?
Yes.
On 4P, we're just going to tweak the agenda language. It's not only sidewalks. We're going to list it as various safety improvements at that railroad crossing, which is on Alma School between Main and Broadway. The railroad wants to bring that intersection up to standards. There's going to be new cantilevers and gates and lights. And so this contract is actually going to put in the... Get the site prepped with sidewalks, medians, and so forth for that. So it's more than sidewalks, so that's why we're just going to tweak it to say various safety improvements.
Okay, so we don't need to re-agendize this or anything?
Nope, it'll just go out tonight with the new language.
Okay. All right. I should have noted that Assistant Manager Kerry Cannon and John Pombier are ably filling in for Mr. Brady today.
We're trying. We'll try hard. It takes two of us, right?
Thank you. Probably the less I say about that, the better. Less is more, right? Thank you. All right, that's Agenda item four. Moving on to five, various resolutions. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I had a concern on the annual action plan. I noticed that we're... There's money being carved out of the general fund for educational for the pre-K and early childhood development. If we have somebody that can speak to that... Because as you know, I'm not a big fan of using taxpayer money to fund educational pieces.
Wow, okay. So you're referring to Agenda item 5I, correct? Okay. Good morning, Liz. Thank you.
This is a project that we have set aside because of some work that's being done on early childhood education. So we know that there's some recommendations, and we're hoping that this money that is from 1617 funding can be used towards that effort.
So how much exactly is coming out of the general fund to pay for that?
Uh, $60,000.
So I'm... As I've made... I've been vocal about this pretty much since we started down this path about using taxpayer dollars to fund early childhood and pre-K. Because I think it's blurring the line between what the core function of the city is and what the core function of the educational community is. And I think there's a lot of organizations like First Things First and so forth that have grant dollars that we could be utilizing to do any type of research or any type of programming. So in this situation, if this is staying on there, then I'll be a no vote on this item.
Okay, so your request is to take this off of the consent agenda for Monday?
Yes.
Okay. And of course, we'll do that, because all it takes is one council member to do that. So we will... This will be off the consent agenda, and we'll consider it at our Monday council meeting? Yes, thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Liz, how are these monies generated? Where do they come from, and how do they get into the general budget?
So the human services funding comes in a variety of ways. It's mostly general funds, but we also get ABC funds. 108,000 of it comes from donations through utility bills. And so it's a combination of both general funds and ABC.
So through the utility bills, people make donations, is what you're telling me?
Yes.
And is there a percentage of that? I mean, is that specifically the 60,000 coming out of that ABC fund? Or just kind of blends altogether?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, you're correct. It blends together. So it's 720,000 total that we allocate, and 108 of that comes from ABC donations.
Yeah, I'm kind of on the fence here. I don't know... I've been thinking about this. Our involvement as a city, whether we should be involved in pre-K and early childhood development. And sometimes I think we should defer to the professionals to do that, even though we do have the horsepower to push it in some of the programs we do have. So I'm kind of weighing the options between the two. And I know 60,000 doesn't sound like a whole lot, but it is seed money that allows maybe the mayor or others can go out and get sponsorships and help fund the program. That would help people. And then I've been doing some research with people on the school board just to see how that plays out, because we know that funding is not available. The schools don't fund these type of programs. And there's Head Start. I believe there's some other programs, too. So, yeah, I'm waffling between the two. So convince me to go one way or the other.
And Mayor, and Council, and, you know, at the end of the day, what the council decides, this is a policy decision, and it's completely up to you. But just to give you a little bit of background of where the 60,000 also came from is the council had convened an early childhood task force about a year ago. And that task force looked very specifically at early childhood education and whether or not this was a challenge for Mesa. And what they came back with was a report that basically said it is a challenge for Mesa, and it can be something that not only helps our kids kind of launch in a successful way, but at the end of the day, it's really about workforce development. And that would be, you know, the city's key role in all of this. One of the things that they did is they came up with recommendations for what we need to do next. And what they said, and very strongly, was to look for existing resources, to start some early childhood education, and to look for grants and things like that, because we also heard that from the city council. And so we have looked at grants, and we actually are going after our First Things First grant. We're very close to finalizing the agreement with First Things First. So I'm hoping to bring that to you all for acceptance of the grant in August when you reconvene. So we are making those kinds of choices and those kinds of decisions. This was an opportunity because we have, within those human service funds, we always set aside a small amount of money for administrative internal costs that may or may not be eligible for reimbursement of federal dollars. And last year, we had $60,000, and we were able to get all of our administrative costs reimbursed through the federal process. We just didn't need that, those monies. Typically, what we would do is just give that back to the general fund. But basically, what we're looking at is just taking those dollars and still keeping them at the city and at the city level, but looking at a way to leverage them as an existing resource. Again, at the end of the day, it's council's decision and council's choice, because it is a policy. We wanted to make absolutely certain we were being transparent about this. That's why it's been part of the process. And, you know, it went through the Committee on Cultural Development Committee. It's been to the council in the past. It went through the public hearing process, and now we're looking at it again. So it is a policy decision, and that's why we've made sure that the policy and this whole process has been very transparent.
Natalie, is this taxpayer money or not?
It is. It's general funds.
General fund money.
It's a combination of general funds and ABC dollars.
Mr. Luna?
Natalie, I appreciate that you went through First Things First to try to get the grant, because we are working towards trying to secure additional monies. And as my colleague to my right mentioned, that a lot of times the city needs to put this, you know, have some part in this, or skin in the game, if you will. And this would leverage and give us some opportunity to do that. I'm... I see Mr. Bob Burzley's colleague over here. One of the things that we've been looking at has been the Upstart Program, which involves technology. So we're looking at different ways of providing pre-K opportunities, particularly for those kids that are in need, those kids in poverty. And this will give us the opportunity to try to do that, try to ameliorate the situation relative to poverty. And another thing that you mentioned is that K-12 dollars from the state is only for K-12. It's just you cannot use K-12 dollars for pre-K. So it's important that we do have some skin in the game and look for these kind of opportunities to, as we begin to work with our young children, particularly those that are most vulnerable. And I want to applaud you for the work that you've done. It's related to this topic, and I know that you've done some work at, I think, Beverly Park, working with many of our departments to try to work with some of our pre-K population. Certainly, I know that there's... We're tight in resources. This would be an avenue to try to provide additional services to the children that really need it most. Those are those children that are in poverty. So thank you for your hard work on that.
Mr. Thompson?
I just think it sets a very dangerous precedent to start utilizing taxpayer dollars to fund educational-type projects. I think if the community was in such an uproar, they would be letting the legislature know that they want this funded. And again, this is a... This is an issue that's better served by the educational community taking this on and through our legislators to make sure that they're funding the school districts properly so that they can... So that the kids are prepared for kindergarten when they come in. It's not the core function of the city to prepare our citizens for school. It's the parents' job as well as the educational community's job.
Thank you. Mr. Glover?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have, like Councilmember Freeman, some easiness of the city getting involved in this as well and the funding source. I am afraid that it will become not only seed money, but an ongoing cost to the city in the future. And I don't think that we should use city funding to fund schooling, not in the school board's initiative and not ours.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Just a reminder that funding from the state only funds K-12. It's not go beyond that. It's in the Arizona Constitution. So that's the only funds that will be provided to K-12. It does not fund pre-K.
I obviously have some opinions on this, and I'm happy to share them. Although just procedurally, just so we're clear where we're at. We're taking this item off the consent agenda. It'll be on our agenda for Monday night, and I think that's a good thing. I look forward to the community weighing in and coming and sharing their feelings with us about this item on Monday. This... It is a little odd that... We have talked about this before. We're taking something off the consent agenda that has been approved by the council and by council committees previously. There's a long list of $780,000 in funding that includes a lot of things that some people might argue are not traditionally funded by the government. See, House of Refuge, and East Valley Adult Resources, and Child Crisis Center, and Valley of the Sun Y MCA. I mean, $780,000 are really good stuff that we're doing in our community. And the idea... I think if we were to rate what are the needs of our community, school readiness would score very high. So I'm not arguing that we don't fund the $780,000, but I think it's interesting to suggest that school readiness doesn't play a role in our city's priorities. I've told the story before of our school superintendent and his tradition of going to the first day of kindergarten every year on the first day of school, and what a sobering experience that is for him. And as he described that to me, and how our assessments that they give to kindergarten students are trending down and down and down, and they're now at this point where, in many situations, that kids are failing to fail the exam because they have no skills that can be tested in what you're looking for for a kindergartner. And my response to him is, well, what can the community do to respond to this? Because that is not the tradition of this community. Traditionally, education has been a core value of Mesa, Arizona, and people come here. We are... People are attracted to our community because this is where you want to raise your kids, because it's a strong education. That's one of the priorities of our community. And Dr. Cowan's response was, "I have nothing. I cannot address preschool. I cannot address school readiness, because the state only funds K-12." He said, "If the community could respond to this challenge and help us with school readiness, that would be a huge assistance." So in that vein, we started looking into this. And we had a great committee of 12 or more that the vice mayor chaired, education experts in our community that told us, yes, this... Mesa, Arizona does not rank well in comparison to our neighbors, in comparison to the nation, in comparison to the state. This is a big black eye in our community. We are not trending in a good direction. And we can choose to ignore this to our own peril. That Mesa will continue to become more and more challenged. Businesses will become less and less interested in asking their employees to raise their children in our community, because that will be what we're known for. I'm sorry, I'm not going to sit by and watch that happen. And I think there are a lot of people in this community that agree with me. So I... If we don't know anything about this, nobody will. If we think, well, if this is important, the Arizona State Legislature will fund it, good luck with that. So I am looking forward to our meeting on Monday. I'm sure the community will let us know how they feel about it. $60,000 is not even a drop in the ocean compared to, you know, what it's going to take to respond to this challenge in our community. So the thought is, there is... You know, there's a lot to be done when it comes to early childhood, and it's all very expensive if you want to do it. And there's no way, I agree, that the city can take on funding that in a huge way. I'm not at all interested in creating a City of Mesa Education Department. But we do have a role to play in supporting our school district and in supporting families that want to get ready, have their kids get ready for school. So the idea is that we would put a little skin in the game to fund a pilot program. There are inexpensive ways to do this on a mass level. The state of Utah, for example, has universal pre-K. That is a... You don't hire teachers, you don't build schools. It's an online program. The City of Mesa, for decades and generations, has been involved in school readiness through our museum and library program and Parks and Recreation Program. I don't think it's a reach to say that we can focus those resources better to get kids ready for school. So I think if we can combine the already existing programs and resources that we have, and we look for very inexpensive ways to support the school district, things that are done at home inexpensively, that can be done on a broad scale. You know, I think there is an affordable way for the city to show support on this issue. So I look forward to further discussing this. I'm glad that we're having this conversation. I invite the community to weigh in and to come to our meeting on Monday and tell us if you think this is something that's important or not. Mr. Freeman, and then Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I learned yesterday, that 40% of all kids in Mesa do not get any type of... Well, 40% do get early childhood, pre-K.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Well, I heard 40, so in that range. So but the rest of the group is around 70% of children receive that type of education prior to coming into... In other localities, not in Mesa, but other localities or communities. So to me, if we're... We have 40%... You know, there's a 30% gap, is what I'm saying, is, and bring those kids up to par. But then all kids, you know, physiological or neurological cannot comprehend and, you know, be a part of that education process, because they're not capable of doing it. So we're affecting a small group of kids. But I think it's important that we do provide some education to youth. And I guess I'm looking at the funding source using the taxpayer. But what I'm also looking at is an action plan to outline it, how it's going to be done. Are we going to track it? You know, are we going to be successful with it? Is this going to be year after year? Or is it just going to be like two or three years? You know, what is our... Was our plan? Instead of putting $60,000 into it, then my thought is, well, I'd like to see an action plan down the road.
You don't mind? I'm going to take a crack at responding to that. I think the proposal that's in front of us right now is that there's $60,000 in rollover money that could be put back into the general fund. Right now, we don't have a specific plan. So no one's saying, we're going to just... We're going to write a check for $60,000 tomorrow. No, that's not the case. We are right now looking for an opportunity to partner with the school district to come up with a plan. If we don't come up with a plan, the $60,000 won't be spent, and it will go back into the general fund. If... Now, you can't do a plan for $60,000. So that would... The folks we've talked to so far, it's a $250,000 program. And they said, "Well, we'll help you raise money for this." So we found somebody that'll give you $100,000 towards this pilot program. And so that... If we get our 60, that gets us down to 190. So I'm anxious to go on the road and go find the additional funding to do a pilot program for a year. And if we're not successful, we're not going to just go spend $60,000 on something that's not going to be productive. So before any money is spent, this council will approve it. I'm just saying that let's set the money aside, put it in on hold before we splash it back into the general fund. And if we... If the school district and the others that are working on this can come up with a good program that comes back to us, and we all go, wow, that's worth giving it a try, then we'll pull the trigger on it. So I think it's important that we understand this is just earmarking this money for a potential program that we hope comes to fruition. Mr. Thompson?
I just wanted to make sure to clarify, too, on the tax dollars, because you mentioned CDBG and some of the other programs that are being funded. And just so that the viewers know as well, that those are federal tax dollars that the city is receiving. And if they're not utilized in Mesa, then they will be utilized in some other city. I would rather utilize those funds in Mesa. What I'm specifically talking about is the $60,000 that are coming out of our taxpayers, our citizens in Mesa that are going directly to pay for a pre-K and early childhood development program.
Sure. Yeah, let's clarify that. We've got several agenda items, 5C through G, I think, authorizing various HUD money that we are allocating. What we're talking about specifically is the 1718 Human Services Funding Awards, which is a total of $780,000. This is primarily general fund money. Am I correct? So that the CDBG money and all the federal money that has specific ties and, you know, will get sent back to Washington, DC if we don't spend it, that's a different pot of money.
Mayor and Council, I thank you for clearing that up, because that's why we have so many agenda items on this, different resolutions, I should say. That way, if you want to pull aside the human services funds, if you continue on the other federal resolutions, that would help us to be able to get that through and submit it to HUD on time.
So the only agenda item we're pulling off is 5I. The rest of these, having to do with authorizing the city manager to enter into contracts with HUD, looks like 5... Well, I don't know. It's like 5B through H.
Yes.
We're going to leave those on, because we all agree that CDBG is not up for debate. This item is just how we're allocating the discretionary money that we have that we'd give to human services, correct? Okay, thank you. Well, again, I'm looking forward to discussing this item on Monday. Yes, Mr. Whitaker?
The question that I have is, is this written in a way that the money can't actually be spent until it comes back to council for approval then? This is just simply setting the money aside at this point? Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, it is right now more of a line item versus a project-specific. So when... Once we know what that project-specific item is, that we need to come back to you.
So the money cannot be spent until?
The 60,000 is just right now kind of a set aside, as the mayor had indicated.
So the other concern that I had was, when I was reviewing the attachment, it appears that all of the Human Services Funding Awards are in order from smallest to largest, but the City of Mesa Early Childhood Enrichment Project is at the very bottom. But that isn't where it would actually line up in this Excel document. I was curious, why is that out of place?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, I think that was just to be able to show that that was separate from all the other ones, because this is not a project-specific. It's a kind of a set aside. So the other ones are very specific to the agency and what programs. And so there's not necessarily any other reason other than that that it's separate from a different funding source, from 1617. The other ones are for 1718.
Okay. And in regards to this, I think some of these other nonprofits that we've seen presentations on or that we're all aware of in the community, and I think the city's actually responsible for making sure that they spend the money appropriately, right? My question for you is, is the city the best entity that should be used for the early childhood program? Or is there a plan to somehow engage a nonprofit and then put them in charge of the program?
Do you want to answer? Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, I guess what I would say is, right now, we're looking at lots of different options for how to address this. The mayor and the vice mayor are looking at an outside contract with Upstart to see if a technology-based system could really help us. We're looking internally at our existing departments and the early enrichment programs that we already do, and figuring out ways to collaborate and to build on them and to kind of add to the technology-based idea. We're also pulling together, through the First Things First Grant, what we're calling an early learning network. And so just like the homeless discussion that we had last week, we have lots of different service agencies and stakeholders, businesses, that are interested in early childhood education and what we can do. And we don't always work well together. We're kind of working in our silos. So the whole idea is to create a new system in Mesa and to use the people who know they're on the ground and doing this. And so we can say, what are our existing resources amongst all of us? Not just the city, but all of us? And how can we build and do better in early childhood education? So we're looking at lots of different options, and not necessarily having the city be the lead, but having these agencies that really know and have been doing this for years kind of help lead the way.
Yeah, I have my reservations if the city takes the lead on it. I don't know that we're necessarily best cut out for managing the program. But as we move forward with this, I guess from my perspective, things that I'd like to see are more detailed program goals and then what those KPIs are. You know, I think we should just, you know... Given that this is funding cut out specifically to the city, I question whether or not there will be any checks and balances in place that are there for all the nonprofits, you know? So what do those KPIs look like, so that when we come back to this in a year, we can say, was this successful? Or did we just completely waste our time and money? So to the mayor's point, you know, I think the $60,000 is roughly the equivalent of, you know, the liability of one PSPRS employee, to put things in perspective. So it's a very minimal amount of money. And, you know, I'm like Freeman. I have my reservations about this. I'm sort of on the fence. But to use the mayor's analogy, it's a drop in the ocean. So I guess we'll see what happens on Monday. But thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
And we're asking all the right questions here. And so I... No one... Again, no one is suggesting that the city create an education department, that we hire anybody, and that we just spend a dime on this until it comes back in a very detailed proposal that will have KPIs and what are we trying to prove up here or not? But I appreciate people being willing to consider it and look forward to the conversation on Monday. Okay, we are... I'm sorry, Mr. Glover, you have anything else you would like to add to this?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Working our way through the agenda, anything else on Agenda item 5? Agenda item 6, then, is to take action on the following... On a subdivision plat. So right now, I think the only item that will be off of the consent will be 5I. Does that make sense? Okay. Next item on our agenda is... Oh, well, to go back and hear more about Agenda item 5Q. Jeff McVeigh, our Director of Downtown... Is it Recreation? Transformation, thank you. Coolest job title in the entire City of Mesa, Mr. Jeff McVeigh. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. We're looking forward to hearing more about this project.
Morning, Mayor, Council. Today, we are here to give you a quick overview and presentation on memorandum of understanding for the development on and above the Drew Street parking lot. To give the viewers some orientation, I'm just going to steal one of your slides. The Drew Street parking lot is the area right here that is just south and west of the intersection of Main Street and Center Street, just to the west of the Heritage Academy. With me today is Tim Sprague and Kent Lyons. They represent the development. And they've taken time out of their morning today to be able to give you an overview of their proposal and their concept. I could do so, but I'd probably not sell it nearly as well as they have their living this. So I'm going to hand my time over to Tim and Kent.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tim Sprague. My company...
My company is Habitat Metro. For the last 14 years, our firm's been involved in infill development specifically in areas like what we're talking about here in downtown Mesa. In the city of Phoenix, next to Hans Park, we've developed three projects, one called Portland Place, one called Portland on the Park, both of them are condominium projects, and one called the Foundry Hotel. About $130 million worth of real estate that we've developed. And since that time, the most important thing that we've learned about developing infill projects is to listen, to get involved in the community and make sure that we're approaching it from the perspective of, this is where I live. And what we found in looking at Phoenix and the reason why we got involved in development in downtown Phoenix were really two things. One of them was light rail. It was very important to us. My partner and I developed some projects in Portland, Oregon before their light rail came into place. And we went back and visited light rail, visited Portland and saw what had happened in Portland, it was transformative. And so we put our toe in the water, actually, we jumped into the deep end of the pool back in 2003 and developed projects in downtown Phoenix, and we've been successful with that. So if you look at the site plan here, in terms of the context, you see the Mesa Center for the Arts. That's the other great big rock that we feel that you've got to put in the jar for there to be a successful infill development. I compliment the city on what it's done, it's probably one of the best performing arts places in this part of the world. So you combine light rail, where they made a center for the arts, and looking at education and the foothold is starting there, downtown Mesa, we feel is ripe. Now, we've always been pioneers, and we were pioneers in 2003 when we did our first project in downtown Phoenix. We were the first new residential condominium project to be built. So we look at the site and why don't we, if we can go to the next page, go back, go back, Jeff, one more. As you can see, there's a small orange square that's right on Main Street, that's 29 West Main. We own that site. And if you look, go into the next slide, that is, I don't know if my pointer will work here, let's try that.
I can get a little bit with the mouse.
Can you? Okay, great. 29 West Main Street, you see that's on your upper right corner? And that's where Drew Street comes down to the south off of Main. The parking lot that we're talking about is the Drew Street parking lot. And our objective is to build a residential and hotel property on that property and connect it to 29 West. And that connector is the plaza area that you see that would be developed with this project at the same time. Now, the most important thing to think about with this project is that the alleyway that runs to the east goes right into the center of the Mesa Arts Center. And if you can imagine the activity and the focus of that, our goal is to make sure that we complement what is there already. In the building, 29 West, that's a 7,000 square foot floor plate building that has a basement. And our objective is to have that be the food and beverage component of the project itself. And on top of that, we would put in an event center, approximately 5,000 square feet, where receptions could take place, that would be catered by a food court that we would show you. In today's language, they call it a food hall. This is where you have artisan food purveyors. Our goal is to have three to four artisan food purveyors. This is the food and beverage component of the hotel, that's across the diagonal plaza. And to give you a sense of what it would look like, we have several folks in mind already that we would put into the facility. And we think it is a great opportunity to not only cater to the hotel and the residences and the structure, but also to the event center that would be on top of the building. Next slide. This is a look to the southeast from the northwest. The building in your lower left-hand corner is 29 West. And you can see the event area on top of that. And then our structure where the hotel and the residences would be located is there in the back to the south. 75 apartment units and 75 hotel rooms is where our magic number is in terms of a minimum that really gets us to a good economies of scale for the project. And the most important thing is that we have the ability to cater to both residences as well as people coming to visit Mesa and for both to be able to take advantage of the amenities that the hotel itself would have. And the idea is to have that clustered around, excuse me, clustered around the plaza area that would be created where Drew comes in and intersects with the alley. We think that'll truly activate the area. That's a look down Drew Street to the south. You can see the 29 West there on your left and the structure on the right. The structure itself will probably be 14 to 15 stories, depending on the height of the parking. And the most important thing that we're going to do is to keep the parking that is there in place. Any parking that would be used with this project would be on top of that, and the structure is actually built on top of what that parking area is. Here's another view of the building looking back to the north. Why don't you hit the next view, please, Jeff? Thank you. And this is a look at the entryway into the hotel off of Drew. This is looking to the west, and this is what would be seen as you're driving down Drew to your right as you see it. One of the important things for us in terms of how this would be placed on the site is to make sure that we integrate well with the existing buildings that are there on the alley, making sure that the entrances that are there are well-respected and that their views into the hotel complement each other. We're excited about this project. This is something that is consistent with what we've done for a long time, which is to come in and do infill development and add to. Our company has a double bottom-line perspective. We like to make money for our investors, and equally as important, we like to contribute social capital to what goes on within the community, where we are. We've been actively involved in neighborhoods the last 15 years to do infill development, and we think that the time for Mesa, for something like this, is right now. The ingredients are there, light rail, education, the arts. We think this is a nice complement to provide activities before and after shows in the Mesa Arts Center, as well as having a good transit place for people to come visit Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague. So Jeff, the reason this is on our agenda is, is there any city action necessary to facilitate the parking arrangements or is anything that the city council needs to do to, you know, encourage this development?
Sure, mayor, thank you. If you give me just a few minutes, I'll run quickly through the terms that we have discussed and that we've agreed upon for memorandum of understanding. Council's action would just be to direct staff to enter into that memorandum of understanding, which would be essentially our agreement to agree later, and then we would start the detailed negotiations of a development agreement and/or purchase or lease agreement for the property. Some of those primary commitments, and so what is the city committing to with this memorandum of understanding? The high-level deal points are included in this, in the, in your council memo, as well as, I'll run through those quickly here. We will enter into a lease, a long-term lease with the developer for air rights above the Drew Street parking lot. That lease would be at a reduced rate that reflects the public benefit the city actually gains through the construction of structured parking, where today we have surface parking, the offsetting of maintenance costs that we would actually achieve. We actually have in our next year budget, well, actually, I guess that would be this year's budget, a $17,000 line item to resurface that parking lot. Things like that go away as we share costs of the maintenance of the parking garage. We'd also be considering a government property lease excise tax G-plat financing for this. I will note, if we do go down that route, the new changes to state statutes will require that the city is the one that completes the public benefit analysis, that we will have to hire an independent third party to make sure that we are complying with the requirements of the G-plat statutes. The city is committing that we will help with some infrastructure cost. Largely, this would be related to streetscape changes on Drew Street and that South Main Alley, but there is also the potential that there could be some infrastructure improvements below grade. We are very confident that we have the capacity available from sewer, water, and electric perspective, but there is that potential that we don't have the delivery there to make it happen. So maybe we have the electric capacity, but we don't have a transformer size large enough to handle the, to handle the development. So there could be additional infrastructure costs. We would be considering the abandonment of a portion of Drew Street. The reason that that is included in this agreement is that we, the opportunity to be able to line that parking garage along Drew Street with some retail space would necessitate us to eliminate some right-of-way to create space that is leasable. And the reason that we enter the right-of-way is that land is at such a premium. We're at just under an acre for this site, and to be able to get the parking structure and the towers above that to work, we pretty much have to go from property line to property line to maximize the site. The consideration of a rebate to a portion of the city's transient occupancy tax, bed tax, that is something that's strictly regulated by state statutes. It very limit, very much limits how much the city can use as an incentive to an economic development project to a maximum of, I believe, around 2%. And I'm going to let Jim correct me if I say any of these things wrong, but the city's transient lodging tax is about 14, 15%, of which the local portion is about 5%. We are able to look at about 2% of that transient occupancy tax as something that can be used as an incentive. If we do go down that route, it would be with specific performance measures, developers, and the project would have to perform to a certain level in order to receive that rebate. And then the remaining 3% would still continue to pass through to visit Mesa as part of their function. In addition to those elements, we would need to go through some entitlements. Right now, the zoning does not support a 15-story tower as much as we like the idea and how nice that building looks. We don't currently have the zoning in place that would allow it. It would require us to do a city-initiated rezoning. This project is consistent with our plan and our vision that's spelled out in the central main plan. We would just have to bring the zoning into compliance with that. Developers also asked to have a project manager assigned to this project as it goes through that entitlement process, through the zoning and permitting process. So we have included that in the agreement as well. Again, I'm going to just summarize, re-summarize what Tim has already said, but in exchange for that, the developer is committing to a 75-room boutique hotel, a minimum 75-room boutique hotel, a minimum of 75 luxury apartments, replacing the city's parking lot with a structured parking lot. And be very clear is that there's 102 spaces on the Drew Street lot today that are public. There will be 102 public spaces on Drew Street tomorrow if this project goes through. There is the opportunity, the developer has committed, that if the city decides that we want additional public parking at this location, that they would include it at their project. The city would just be responsible for the difference in the cost. In addition to the hotel apartment development, there would also be a minimum 7,000 square foot food and beverage and/or retail development as part of the 29 West Main, and additional opportunity for the second story to be built with meeting space, banquet halls, and additional retail or restaurant space. There are a few things that we have to do to work together on this one. Well, there's going to be a lot of things that we're going to have, would have to do to work together, but some of the big ones relate to, I'm going to go out of order for my bullet points. The first one is that gift deed. In 1957, the Drew family, three members of the Drew family deeded this property to the city as a gift deed with a restriction that it be used exclusively for public parking purposes. That does cause some challenges with trying to build on top of the parcel, so we have been, well, actually, these gentlemen have been trying to find the heirs of the Drew family, and they have been somewhat successful, to the point that just yesterday, we received a certified letter in the mail from Frank Drew in Washington State, saying that he has been in contact and discussing this with Kent Lyons and that he is very open to this idea and is actually very excited about the potential of seeing something happen with his family's legacy. So we think we can work through that, it's just a little bit of legal maneuvering. The parking structure, should, you know, and Councilmember Freeman, I think you'll like this one, this developer's thinking ahead, they would like to, and they will be designing that parking structure with, so that 10, 10 years down the road, maybe less, when cars are less important to us, that that structure could easily be converted over to additional residential space down the road. We will have to work out cost sharing for the operation and maintenance of the structure since it will be a combination of public and private parking. And there is this discussion, there's a desire by the developer to have this be a green development, that the energy that comes from it be from a renewable source. So we are, we have to have some detailed discussions about how maybe that partnership works through our city utility. The MOU is set to, would expire on June 30th if we aren't able to come up with a final development agreement, but I think that June 30th is more than enough time then that we would need to accomplish that. So with that quick overview, happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Mr. McVeigh, thank you. Mr. Sprague, this is a great development here. Jeff, remind me of the G-plat, go back to ownership issues, I think there's a timeline there. Just explain the G-plat component for me, or for us, at least for me.
Sure. Mayor, council, Councilmember Freeman, G-plat allows a private development to essentially construct their project, transfer ownership of that project to the city, and then for an eight-year period, their property taxes are abated. Now, that abatement doesn't mean they don't pay anything, they pay essentially an excise tax in lieu of property tax that then helps still fund K through 12 schools. After that eight-year period is over with, the property would have to go back to, the property would have to be transferred to the developer. There has been some changes in the state statute that maybe Mr. Smith can help clarify that we still need to work through. Previously, at the end of the eight-year abatement, the property could, the property could be sold to the developer. Now, the eight-year abatement, it says that it has to be just transferred to the developer. What we have to figure out is how that applies to air rights versus actual land. The actual G-plat lease, though, can be up to 25 years after the eight-year abatement. They will start paying their normal taxes, but there could be still a reduced lease rate from year eight to year 25. Does that sound like a fair summary, Jim?
There's a number of, the statute changed recently, it was complex before, it's become even more complex, and there's different options within the statute. The basic concept is this, is there's a number of different types of G-plat lease deals, but when you're talking about it in the economic incentive type of G-plat, the traditional model is, is that the developer owns the property to begin with and then builds on top of it and then transfers it to the city for a period of time, and then it's transferred back. In this case, the city actually owns the property to begin with. And so the recent statutory changes didn't really sort of contemplate that fully, and so it creates a little more complexity with an already complex statute. But we'll work with the developers and we'll find a solution between all the alternatives and which one works the best for both parties. And so there's a number of different alternatives, an eight-year abatement G-plat with the transfer back, a different, not in a full abatement G-plat, that can be 25 years, or a number of other different structured deals. So we're still working out the different sort of options on which one works the best ultimately.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Just to follow up, Mr. Sprague, I just would like to see pictures of your prior projects in Phoenix and see how they turned out. I like pictures.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Freeman, I would invite you to go to our website.
Okay.
Which is habitatmetro.com. And I will make sure that I send you the link and send you some pictures through, Mr. McVeigh, so you have a chance to see them. I think you'll like what we've done.
Well, I'm excited about your project, thank you.
Thank you.
Before Mr. Luna says anything, I need to say, I've been on our, I was on our city council 20 years ago, and I've been seeing pretty pictures of downtown Mesa brought into this room by real estate developers, nonstop for 20 years. And so I'm kind of skeptical after having gone through that experience over and over and over again. I'm not skeptical when it comes to this development because this is not a guy with pretty pictures. So, Mr. Freeman, please don't look at his pretty pictures. Go see his project. What we're talking about doing, I mean, the future is alive and well right now, it's in downtown Phoenix, the Portland project, it'll knock your socks off. He's talking about taking what he's already done and doing it in downtown Mesa. So this is not a guy, this is not a snake oil salesman that's coming in saying, give me some city property and I'll make something. This is a guy who's done it over and over and over again, and this is going to be a transformative project for downtown. So please don't, please don't send him any pictures. Take him, take him to Portland and walk him up and down and show him exactly what you're going to do in downtown Mesa.
Okay. I would love to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Just real quick, Mr. Sprague, thank you for this wonderful project. I'm really excited about it, particularly because of the art. I'm really excited about it, particularly because of the artwork in your current project, which makes your hotel a unique place. I'm excited that it's going to complement the Mesa Arts Center. Maybe you can speak to us on the economic impact that your Portland project has done in Phoenix, as well as any other project, and what will happen here in the city of Mesa.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Luna, our project in Phoenix, well, first of all, the first two condominium projects have been very successful. First was 54 units. We sold 52 before we finished construction. The latest project is 149 units, a 14-story building. We obtained a certificate of occupancy in January of this year, and we only have 29 left. And the prices range from $275,000 to $1,250,000. And what we wanted to do when we built that project was to really have a broad spectrum in terms of income levels. And we felt that was important to make sure that happened. And to our happiness, the distribution of those units has been incredible. We had penthouses going first. We had the smaller ones going. And if you go and look at what's left, it's a smattering of everything, which is great. The hotel that we built, literally next door to the condo projects, The Foundry, is focused upon local art, period. We have a food and beverage, a restaurant there called Match that I would match against anybody. All of the art in our building is local. We have a gallery, and the gallery happens to be a hotel and a restaurant and hotel rooms. And we have meeting space that has local art displayed in it. And when it's not being used as catered meeting space, it's a gallery open to the public. We employ 100-plus employees there to run the hotel. The numbers would be very similar for this project in terms of what we were doing. The food and beverage component for us is a very, very important item, and we would think that what we would do at the 29 West property would be something that would complement at least the quality of what we've done in Phoenix. Local people, hopefully, we're gonna try, Kent and I have been working, talking to people to come in and have this good artisan food, something that everybody would like, families and everybody.
Kent and I recently had the opportunity to sit in on a presentation from an economic development firm who was talking about what's going on in Mesa. And they identified in that process almost a number approaching $1 billion in retail leakage, meaning Mesa citizens like myself going to Gilbert and Scottsdale Arcadia for shopping and restaurants. So we think what we're putting together here is an important component to start to take some of that back. Those families who right now are going to downtown Gilbert, which is a great spot to eat, we can put the same thing here and draw them, which has benefit to the city in terms of tax revenue it creates. It was also important for my partner, Bob Worley, and I, and part of the reason we were so thrilled to partner with Tim and his team at Habitat Metro was their attention to design and quality. And you'll see that, we'll arrange to take you down there. But it's important, we feel it's incumbent upon us as one of the, if not the first, major projects out of the gate, to set the standard for what will follow in downtown Mesa. And as activity over the next few years continues and other groups come before you in similar fashion, that you can point to what we've put together as the standard for design and quality and execution in downtown Mesa.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I've been by Portland Place and down on Roosevelt Row, and I've eaten at Match. It is a really good restaurant. And, you know, Portland Place is, it is a high-end condo. I mean, it's, you know, if you, you know, I was gonna, I was gonna ask you what your price point was. I was thinking it was probably like 500 to a million, but, you know, 250 to a million is right in line, I think, with what we're looking for in our downtown area. You know, we're wanting that market rate-type housing in our downtown because that brings people with expendable income that want to eat, play, and thrive in our downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for this gentleman? Mr. Glover, any questions for these folks?
No, Mayor, but I've been in contact with Kent, and I'm really supportive of the project.
Great. Thank you. Well, again, this is gonna remain on our consent agenda, and as it should, but I think we will look back on this project as a tipping point in downtown Mesa. So, Mr. Sprague, thank you, and Mr. Lyons, thank you for bringing this great project to our city. I think it's great news for everyone.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is Item 2, information pertaining to current job order contracting projects. Council, any questions regarding any of those items on the agenda? Hearing none, the next item is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Any reports? Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Fourth of July, we had a wonderful celebration of freedom, and so I want to give kudos to staff and to our sponsors. There were a lot of people in downtown Mesa. It was really, really amazing. So I want to thank everyone that attended. I met people at the gym, said they had never gone. It's the first time they've gone, and they thought it was wonderful. So, good job. Good job to City Mesa.
I agree. Usually, when you're outside with a crowd of people and it's 100 degrees, you just hear people complaining about how miserable they are. But I was struck by everybody I talked to that night. Everyone was saying, isn't this great? Isn't this fun? Isn't this a great party? So it was, congratulations to everyone involved in putting on that event. I appreciated, Mr. Luna and I had the opportunity to, and I know it was attended by Mr. Thompson and Mr. Freeman as well, to a naturalization ceremony. 150 brand-new United States citizens from 30-some-odd countries. One of the most patriotic events that I've ever been to. So, again, congratulations, everyone who helped put that together. I thought it was very, very well done. Next item on our agenda is schedule of future meetings and general information. Carrie?
So we have an Audit and Finance and Enterprise Committee on Monday, July 10th, at 4:30, and that will be followed by a council meeting at 5:15. And that's your last council meeting before the summer break. And then we'll come back on August 17th at 7:30, and we'll see you for a study session.
Great. Thank you very much.
I will remind you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else for this meeting, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Luna. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.